Okay, we'll call the September 3rd, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to order a Stanford pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are ready to call the rolls.
Mr. Townsend?
Here.
Mr. Cool?
Here.
Ms. Water?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Here.
Ms. Mason? Mr. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Ms. Boyd?
Here.
A hundred present for an accent with your power forum.
All right, our next item of business is the annual election of officers, and for that I'll turn it over to David to decide over that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Planning Commission, it's time to conduct our annual business, and we need to elect officers. At this time, I will entertain nominations for Chairman of the Planning Commission. David Allen has been nominated. Seconded. Are there any other nominations?
Motion to nominate cease.
Mr. Allen, do you accept the nomination?
I guess I will.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay. We will do a roll call vote for Mr. Allen to continue to be the Chairman of the Springfield Regional Planning Commission.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Ms. Water?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. That didn't sound too energetic, did it?
You could always abstain. So I assume that Mr. Allen is elected for this next session. Mr. Allen, I will continue on to take nominations for the Secretary of the Planning Commission. I noticed that our Secretary is absent, and she is not available to decline a nomination, so I am at this time accepting nominations for Secretary of Springfield's Planning Commission. Oh, yeah. Wanda has been, Wanda Mason, and there's a second for Secretary.
What happens when you're not here? That's what happens when you're not here.
Yep. Are there any nominations, other nominations? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to close nominations for Secretary?
Motion to close nominations.
Give me a second, somebody.
Second.
Okay. We'll have a roll call vote. Miss Ed?
Ms. Water?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Mr. Chairman, having conducted the annual business for the election of officers for the Planning Commission of Springfield, Tennessee, I return the floor to you.
Say again?
The floor is yours, Chairman.
No, I still couldn't hear you, Dave.
The floor is yours.
We need a vice chair now, right?
We have, it's been a while, but yes, we can do nominations for a vice chair.
Okay, is there a nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Bud and Cool.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion for nominations to cease?
To cease.
Second.
All right. Let's call the roll on buzzer.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Water? Passes eight zero.
All right, we have officers for one more year. Is there a motion for approval of minutes from August 6th meeting?
Move to approve, second.
Got a motion at second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those who stand approved. Under new point business, 5.1 is a preliminary for Continental Apartments. I think we have a drawing in our packet and one on the screen. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm gonna take this off so y'all can hear me. The property owner, Mr. Roger Joines, has submitted a preliminary layout for this, for a multi-residential in the CS district. The, this preliminary layout meets the criteria of a ventilated buffer around the property, adequate parking, there will be storm drainage, it's not shown, but this is a use by right. Having no, no need for off-site infrastructure improvements because the ADT will not increase the volume on Crescent to require road widening. The staff recommends approval.
Where's the drive between the credit union and the Continental?
This right here is the existing driveway. This, right here, are breakaway bollards. In the, they have shear pins. In the event that the emergency services need to get off of Crescent into this area, an ambulance or a fire truck can pull up and touch those bollards and move forward, and those shear pins will shear off, those bollards will fall down, and the emergency services can travel to the, to the end of this area.
Is that a completely different set of apartments than the ones on Memorial there?
It is. It's the same property. It's the same property. What they're trying to do with these bollards is these 12 will only enter and exit onto Crescent. These existing units, down here, these existing units, will only enter and exit off of Memorial. So these people will not be able to navigate through the parking area in the driveway and exit onto Crescent. There's adequate water, adequate sewer available for that side, for the, for 12.
In case of emergency, how long would it take those bollards to, to open, how long, do you know?
Just have, not long at all, there's not, it's, it's a low strength metal, something similar to lead, maybe vistmus, and it doesn't take anything for those sharp edges to shear those right off. Yeah, I don't know, you know, my grandfather used to have a boat, and the old style motors before they had the slip clutches on the propellers, they had this thing called a shear pin. And, and if they, the propeller ever hit like a underground, underwater stump or something, it would just shear that pin immediately. It's a similar thaw in the way that that's doing. They're not, you know, you don't get them, you don't have to get out of the vehicle and pull them out of the ground. They, they break right away or fall right over, and then the owners that are later, you know, will have to come back out, pull the covers off, put new pins in them. Which I can only, and you know, they're big enough for emerg, they're, not just any car's gonna be able to drive over them, maybe, once they're done. You know, they're, they're thick enough that an emergency vehicle with a high clearance will go over them. Am I speaking correctly, Corey?
Yes, sir, they're just intended so that if someone calls and says there's a fire, and the description they give is Continental Apartments, that the fire department does not come to Continental Apartments and then not be able to get through and have to go all the way around. And it's, for, so it's emergency personnel can get there, if someone, you know, doesn't have an address and just says, hey, there's a building on fire back here, or whatever the case is, and also so that it doesn't create a cut through from, you know, tenants or other people on Crescent cutting through there like I'm sure they do now with the gravel drive.
Are they identified as breakaway, so?
Yes, sir, they are identified as breakaway bollards. The, and, miss, you can't see it very well, but, Mr. Net, let me get that back. Mr. Nettafield assures me that he's gonna do a, a, yeah, it says breakaway, but he's gonna do a detail.
Correct, they'll have a construction detail with specing out a specific one.
And, and that would be also in their construction specifications when they go to bid for the project. But it does, it is a, this is, it is a breakaway bollard, I mean, you can't, but I can read it, but you probably can't, but, yes, it is, it is going to be a very specific specified brand that, you know, and the tech, I won't call it technology, but newer construction technologies are allowing with lighter metals or, you know, not aluminum, but carbon fiber type things to allow this type of stuff to take place.
How wide an opening do they have back there off Crescent?
That is a 25-foot opening. That is the minimal allowable opening. That, that is a 12 and a half foot double lane. Once again, meeting the minimum standard, not that that's a bad thing, we establish a minimum. And then, let me take that back. They meet the requirements for the, for this site plan in a preliminary layout. What they'll have to do, after y'all approve this preliminary layout, and we won't bring it back to you, Corey and other individuals at Clover will go ahead and do the technical side of it. They'll do the water, the sewer, the storm drainage. They'll spec out all the plantings, all of that, and they'll submit it to us, and we'll review it, and when they get it all in order, which won't take them long, we'll approve it and move forward.
Dave, what is going to happen if someone can just drive it around, what's gonna be on the side of that entrance if it's like, if they can just drive around?
Well, that's a curb. It's a six-inch curb, I don't know if it's a post-curb or an extravee curb, but it's a curb, probably, I would say that it's a non-mountable curb.
Correct, and there's an existing retaining wall that starts right in here somewhere and goes down, it's about a foot to two foot tall as it goes toward the bank. Or I guess it's credit union, take me.
Towards, yeah, the credit union. So, very good question, I mean, we do the, what we can do to mitigate, minimize and mitigate things like what you're thinking of, but I'm gonna go back to my favorite saying, people are people.
If people do drive through there and break those pins off, who replaces them?
Well, first off, if you do it in anything short of a older pickup truck, you're gonna be doing damage to your front end and setting off your airbags.
And the owner of the property will be responsible if emergency personnel goes through there to fix them.
I know Ms. Wanda has stated that the credit union is concerned about additional traffic coming on their side.
Mm-hmm. And so, that, and this is them mitigating that, but, you know, I, it's as, it's as good a plan as we've seen anywhere for multi-residential, and it, it gives us a pretty good, a pretty good plan. They've addressed everything that we can address to the best of our abilities as, as designers and planners and engineers, and, but like I said, there's, there's always that one that can find the way around it.
I just wanted to make sure that, so it goes Crescent, and then the other opening up at the top, that is Memorial? That it comes down to Memorial?
Well, this is.
That part?
That is Crescent, okay? This is Crescent, oh, this is Crescent, back here.
And then the bottom part is Memorial?
This is Memorial, right here. So.
Show me the, maybe.
Okay, let me get my.
On that page.
Okay. This, right here, is Memorial. This is where the existing apartment residents will continue to come in here, and they will continue to exit here. Those bollards right here will prevent them from going back and coming out on Crescent. These people that live in these 12 proposed, they're, they will only enter and exit off of Crescent.
I thought they were exiting out of Memorial.
No, that we have purposely, or the designer and the owner with comments from staffs, and, you know, 'cause we had a BZA meeting, and that variance got turned down. They're very aware that we as a Planning Commission and a Board of Zoning Appeals want those two separated and maintain separation so that there's not an overpopulation or overuse of Crescent Street.
Have you taken the justice before?
We did. And they didn't have the landscaping in, they didn't have the removable bollards, they had just a much more general plan, and so we, and this was back in November, December. And Mr. Nettafield and Mr. Joines came and met with myself and Gina and Kimberly, as well as the city manager and the assistant city manager, and so he's given us this preliminary layout that meets all the requirements of the layout. He chose not to move forward with the site plan until y'all approve this, at which time he will get us all the technical aspects of it.
I think the changes have made it better, I mean.
I, I agree. There'll, less, there'll be less impact to these property owners on this side, right here and right here. And then Mr. Join, Goings, I'm sorry, owns this property already, all the way through. But he is putting it down along this property line right here as well.
All right, any other questions, discussion?
I make motion approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Water?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
All right, the next item under new business is the Village Greens subdivision, section five. I think we have a play out of that in our package, too. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen, this is the, the last section of Village Greens. Mr. Pedro Reyes is here, if y'all have any questions. But the bottom line is, is staff has approved this preliminary layout, well, not preliminary, it's a final plat. The, the infrastructure, the, the majority of the infrastructure is in. There is some work that will still have to be done in this area with this stormwater detention facility, but there is binder, sidewalk, all the way here, and then the binder's already down here. The only thing they lack is the, the water, the sewer's in, the storm drainage is in, the curb's in. The only thing that they lack to, to move forward with constructs, beginning construction houses after y'all approve this plat, next month, we will be bringing a performance bond for Village Greens, section five, to you to recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, at which point, I think the meeting is the 20th of October, I'd have to look at a calendar, but after that, after we record the plat, which we will record the next Friday on the 23rd, after that plat's recorded, they can start pulling permits for these. There will be a holdup until they complete, you know, we have a 10% or two, or two lots, whichever is more, so they will have to complete the work, just like section four, we're holding three lots in section four until they finish all the required work, at which point they will be able to get those last 10% or three lots in this case. Building permits in section four, the same rules apply to section three, five here. We are also gonna be taking a maintenance bond for section three. They've completed, they've got some punch that they're finishing off through the public works, but, so next week, well, next month, you will be seeing a maintenance bond for Village Greens, section three, a performance bond for Village Greens, section five, and a performance bond for Sleepy Hollow, section five, which you guys have already approved back in November of last year, and you approved a $600,000 bond, but they chose to go ahead and do the majority of the infrastructure instead of getting a bond for that large of an amount. So we're, we've already gotten Mrs. Reyes, the performance bond numbers they submitted, we reviewed for section five, Sleepy Hollow, they've got that. We're trying to wrap up Village Greens, section five, numbers, but they're on track to be on the October Planning Commission meeting and the October Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting. So staff recommends approval.
I'll have to say the houses down in that subdivision do look good.
Glad to see them. And Mr. Reyes has done a lot for our community over the last few years in building new residential housing, you know, he's working on getting the last section of Green Hills over here off of Kenny's School Road, or Kenny's Road, Kenny's Road. You know, Harmon Jones started that back in 99, but he's working with Mr. Jones to, to finish that, get that plat approved, get the new construction plans approved, and there's gonna be another 50 lots there. And so, you know, Mr. Reyes has every intent to just keep on building new residences in the city of Springfield and, and increasing the tax base here. He's also, y'all looked at a property that, those trailers, those nine lots, those trailers that are on 17th Avenue, four months ago, three months ago now, because rezoned to MRO. Some point he's gonna pull those trailers off and put some multi-residential there, right behind Elmo's and the, what I will always call the piggy pit.
Any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
There.
I heard a second somewhere. Tony? We have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Water? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
All right, last month we had a discussion about the CS and MRO zoning, and there's an item on the agenda to follow up on that.
Yes.
Do I, we need a motion to discuss this?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we have a motion to put this on the floor?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
For our members that were not here last month, we discussed, and I'm just gonna do a quick review, permitted principal uses that are allowed within the CS zoning. In 2001, the city of Springfield brought to the Planning Commission and then took to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to add residential, per, multi-residential into the CS. Previous to that, it had not been a primary principal use. Since that time, we've had four projects submitted, two, Mr. Goings' project that you just approved, went. There's another one that will be coming to you next month called The Flats at Moreland. It's gonna be 76 units, it's off of Moreland Drive, behind the, the commercial building there. If you were to come off of Memorial where Harbor Freight, the, and the Dollar General are, it's gonna be up in, in there, behind there.
The insurance, that farm insurance?
Yes.
It's on your big, um.
Yeah, it's, it's behind them as well, the road goes between though, that area. So, that one will probably go. The reason it's coming to you, other than the fact that it's MRO, it's 108,000 square feet of total building. So it'll come to you as well. So, but in the past, multi-residential hasn't been there. It's a, like, it's a use by right, principal use. If they come in and they submit plans that meet the requirements, and there's no off-site improvements that are, that are directly contributable to the, the project, you know, as the Planning Commission, you guys have to approve it. So, I think, my opinion is, is that that was never the, an intended use for CS. We should consider taking out multi-residential as a, as a use by right, and that would allow this Planning Commission more control over multi-residential development because it allows you to actually be in charge of rezoning. So, and the other reason goes back, permanent residential in CS, it, you know, it's strictly a property tax generator where goods and services generate sales tax as well as property tax. And so, if you remove that principal use out of CS, that's not to say, because, you know, MRO and CS are both commercial zoning classifications. A person can look at a lot that's in CS and come to this Planning Commission and ask for you guys to rezone it to MRO, and if you choose to do so, you can pass the MRO zoning and allow them to move forward. If you think that the best use would be goods and services, you can also control by denying them and say. them and say, we really think this should be, the best use for this is commercial goods and services. So it gives you guys more control over multi-residential development in Springfield. So, and then if y'all approve it, and it goes to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and they approve it, it'll be rezoned. If y'all disapprove it, it goes to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and they agree with you, they will, you know, it won't become MRO. And MRO, you know, multi-residential is a, you know, that's what we're having interest in right now, a lot of interest. We're not seeing the last big subdivision that we saw, what I'd say big is Bell Haven, 28 lots off Main Street, they're gonna, you know, they're looking now, they're looking at 230,000 is the starting price for those homes. They may even be higher now with, you know, lumber prices in the last month have gone through the roof. So, you know, I know people that had gotten quotes in March, whose lumber package went up by $20,000 into last month. So it's, it's a crazy construction time that we live in, in Middle Tennessee, and I'm thinking it, you know, lumber prices, it's not just in Middle Tennessee, but it's throughout the country. The pandemic has impacted production of timber and, you know, milling of lumber and hope.
The hurricane's going to affect it too.
That, that always does, and then there have been several tornadoes throughout the country, and, and, you know, we just, we didn't have a good stockpile, and we, you know, during the pandemic, everybody decided, this is a good time, if I own a house, to do some remodeling, and, you know, they wore those out, and Home Depot, so anyway, that's a whole nother story. But with that said, our, my recommendation is to come back, if y'all are, if y'all agree to take that out as a principal use, is for me to update, bring to you an ordinance, preferably, if I can get it together in time for the October Planning Commission and the October Board of Mayor and Alderman, that will amend the CS section of the zoning ordinance to remove multi-residential by right out of CS.
Where are you going to put it?
I'm not going to put it anywhere, we have MRO.
Okay. So that would take all the residential?
All the multi-residential.
Out, yeah.
Out of it.
Not, not?
Except for semi-permanent, like hotels.
You would still have a little residential.
Well.
It's not multi-residential.
No, it's, and it's not, you know, it's mul, it's like hotels and apartment houses, that kind of thing, or apartment hotels, but.
And your core commercial still has a residential element in it?
Yes, it does.
Okay, like for upstairs and buildings?
Or you can come in and do, if your lots, however big your lot is, you can cover 75% of it and build up 70 feet in the air, and stack up three or four levels, and have 16 or 15 or 12, depending on how big you want them, in the core commercial, and have them either be apartments or sellable units. It's an exciting time to be in Springfield, we're getting a lot of interest in a lot of stuff. Like I said, we've got MRO coming next month, 8.4 acres on the east side of Bill Jones Industrial Drive. It's RTN now, but it butts up to the RI zoning district. They're looking to do 50 or so units. It's, it's rough, so they can't do a full density of five acres next to Martin Luther King Park on Laurel Road that's outside the city. There's people wanting to get that annex, rezone to MRO, and not do full density, but do 55 units or so. And then so that brings up the conversation that Gina and I have been having, and, you know, we're starting to put a little pressure on people when they come in and say MRO and go, you do know, there's the O part of the MRO, which is offices, restaurants, hair salons, things that you can put in these developments that the people can utilize right there, build some commercial into it, and have, have a little walkable community. So it's, we just have to apply gentle pressure, and eventually, we'll see something similar to what has taken place over in Pleasant View, where they have some restaurants and offices on the bottom, and then condominiums on top of those. You know, they have to meet the building codes, you know, all the fire requirements and things like that, but it's, you know, it, it, it has a lot of potential. All of our thing, all of our future developments have a lot of potential, but.
If we can get the first one to do that, I think that a lot of them will follow in behind them.
It kind of seems like, that's sort of like the trend, residential and commercial stuff. I say that when I go to Nashville about the South Stadium, it seems like those are apartments, or lots, or whatever they call them.
Yes, sir.
Or everywhere, you might walk out the door and walk across the tunnel, or go by the door.
Yes, sir.
Old people like living in the suburbs can go to town to handle business, but I think the younger people don't mind coming out their door and be right in the middle of it, too.
And that's a very, very true statement. And that is, that's, that's the trend, you know. Like I said, the biggest lot subdivision we've seen is 10,000 square feet, you know, that's four per acre. People don't want to, you know, they, they work all the time with, with technology like it is, they're never really off the clock, so they don't, you know, younger generations, younger than me, prefer to have their availability not to mow the yard, you know, and pay a monthly homeowners association fee, where the homeowners association takes care of all the yard work and all the maintenance and things like that. So it, you know, it's a coming trend, we're not getting away from it. You know, the other side of that is, it's, it's very beneficial to keep urban sprawl from happening, so.
So I guess it sounds like the only, a lot of the drawbacks is the only getting your property back, and all of the versus sell that in probably.
Well, if, if it moves from, if you take the MRO out of it, then those properties will be goods and services and get both property tax and sales tax, where right now, the one that we just looked at for Mr. Goings, and, and that's a unique situation in itself. There was no possibility of any other commercial development there, period. So, you know, he, they could, if this was not there, they could have just as easily come to you guys and said, I want to rezone this back portion, it's already zoned CS, to MRO, given, given us a good preliminary plan, good layout, have them sell it to you, and then, you know, and because it's already a commercial zone, and MRO's a commercial zone, you could go ahead and rezone that, and, and still be within, you know, doing the right thing. But in other places within the city where the lots are empty and the road frontage is on Memorial, this, they can go right in there now, buy up an acre lot, put an apartment complex on it, and the only thing that the city and the county get out of it is property tax. Not to say that it probably wouldn't be a good property tax, but, you know, if you're selling goods and services, you not only would get the property tax, but you would also get the sales tax, and not only, you know, the city doesn't just benefit, there's a portion of that that goes to the county as well.
I don't view it as that's all we're getting, we're selling electricity, and we're selling water, and we're selling gas, and so we're selling a lot more than just property tax.
Yes, sir, but commercial developments usually use higher amounts of electricity, they heat larger areas, they, so they're going to use more electric or gas, water not so much, but it is, but, but the bottom line is, is you will have more control over multi-residential development in your city if you remove the multi-residential out of the CS.
I agree. You been there at Pleasant View lately?
I have not. I have, I haven't been out of Springfield very often at all.
That's probably 50 units going up and down there right now, on the backside. It's, it's a nice setup.
Yep.
Hey, if you're going to retire, you go down there, you ain't got nothing to take care of.
Right.
You go in your house.
And anytime somebody comes to us and says it, we go, go down there and look at that, that's what we want.
It's nice.
Don't know that we'll get it, but that we recommend you go look at it, so.
So you want a motion to do this, to bring an ordinance before us?
Yes, sir, I'm wanting an ordinance, not an ordinance, but a motion that says that you approve of the city's staff to go ahead and write up an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to recommend to the planning commi, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, but I will bring the ordinance to you, you will get the opportunity to review it, the only thing I'm going to pull out of it is multi-residential as a principal use, I'm not changing anything else.
All right, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I favor it.
Okay, who got the second on that one?
Townsend.
Oh, okay, Tony.
Tony.
And we have a motion and a second, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Hollensworth.
Yes.
Ms. Woodard.
Ray Carroll.
Ms. Woodard.
Yes.
No, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I can afford, yes.
Ms. Boy.
Yes.
I'm okay.
Mr. Townsend.
Yes.
Mr. Cool.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right, the next item under new business is information on minor subdivisions approved and building permits issued.
I just wanted to give you a brief today, we have had 72 residential new builds since January 1 in the city of Springfield. We have had some, and we've had, we've had residential renovations, we've had residential additions, we've had commercial renovations and commercial additions, and we've had industrial renovations. We haven't had any new builds in commercial and industrial yet, where power, there's one that's, hopefully, will go here before long, but the estimates on all of that work that they've been doing to date is 8.7 million dollars worth of new value of property that we have put into the city of Springfield since January 1. And we still got a few more months left, and we're looking forward to new projects coming in. So, you know, we're, we're moving forward. We've got, this is plant, subdivisions and site plans that have been approved by staff since January 1. So as you can see, we've got, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 minor subdivisions. There are two in one lot subdivisions that were cut off or subdivided, and that's what you have given us the preview to approve for you. There are no utility improvements, there are no roadway improvements, it's, you know, lots in pre-existently zoned areas that were big enough to subdivide and meet the zoning requirements, and so we've done those. There are some that'll have to do some sidewalks that are, because the areas have to have sidewalks, but nothing major. Site plans, we have done, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, yeah, I should have just looked at that, Kimberly did all this for me, and I should have got down to the bottom, but staff approved 11 subdivisions. There were, there are a total of 22 projects that we're in the works of doing, y'all approved one of them tonight, so the, so y'all have approved another part of those, 10, 9, 10. We've got site plans, we've got 11 of those. The last one is, the one just came in, but, you know, we've got New Hope, where we went through and got a conditional use and rezoned, they've got that approved back in May. I'm going to call them and let them know that, you know, their plan has a shelf life, so, you know, they need to start moving forward on that. But then we did a minor Robertson County, Popeyes is on hold, soon as the co, the pandemic hit, I mean, they turned in a great site plan, I mean, hit all the requirements right off the bat, and they were ready to go, and then, next thing you know, we're on hold, we're, we're going to see what's happening. But it's at a lot, and it's in front of Burke's area, right beside McDonald's, right across the street from Annex, on the other side of Annex, in that, there's an out parcel out there in that paved area. Main Street Church of Christ, we did that one for you, but we did the rezoning in last year, where they went from RTN to CC. Luna Missionary Baptist over on 17th, they're doing a little addition, a little paving, a little stormwater management, nothing, nothing major, but we handled that. Powder Plus is, you know, powder coating industry, Kevin Dean owns that business, he came to us beginning of this year to rezone us five acres on Bradley Drive from MRO to RI. He's going to move his business across, he's got, he's going to build a bigger, build, bigger building, he's anticipating substantially more business, and, you know, a local man with a local business, or local people with local businesses, growing and being successful in Springfield, and you guys helping them out by rezoning properties, and, and they're moving right along. They're, you know, it's just a matter of time here, I don't know if it's going to happen by the end of 2020, but it'll definitely happen in 2021, he'll begin that project. Helen Cotton, we had to do a, a, a condition, not a condition, but a variance, they're just about built out the max that they can build out, as a matter of fact, they have built out the max that they can build out on that lot on South Main Street. They were adding a 500 square, or 5,000 square feet sweat room to help them prepare their tobacco, so.
Well, I think it's more for their customers to use to bring in there, so they're being more customer-friendly, or helping their customers out, where they have to get their tobacco sweated and everything like that.
Getting ordered for stripping, okay, thank you. Martin Reyes, we've worked with them, they've done two expansions, 25,000, 24,000 square foot each, under 50,000, and that was last year, and they have brought an updated parking lot to accommodate the new building that they've had and increase in employees, so that they don't, so they're, they're taking all that aggregate parking out that they had, and putting in parking that meets our minimum standards of dustless surface and curb and gutter, and doing storm drainage, and, you know, making the place, coming in compliance with our ordinances. And then former Applebee's, it's been submitted, so I can just go ahead and say it, half of it is going to be a Starbucks. Don't know what the other half's going to be, but half of it's going to be a Starbucks. And we're, have just recently in the process. And we're have just recently in the process of wrapping this one up. We've made our comments to them, to Klover Engineering, who's the firm that's doing the work, and they are going to make those changes and submit, and we'll wrap that one up. Our Lady of the World Catholic Church, it just came in first this week, in the last week. I really, it's it's an addition. I haven't had the opportunity to look at it to tell you exactly what it is, but.
Basically, it's just bathrooms. They have, I don't know what type of bathrooms they have, but they just, they're adding bathrooms. They said that the lady I talked to said that they didn't have bathrooms in the church building or in some building that they're, that they're needing, so they're adding bathrooms to the front there, is what she said.
And so I just wanted to take the opportunity once again just to let you know, just 'cause you're not, as a planning commission, seeing what's going on or seeing the the projects that are being submitted, that, you know, we we are rather busy. We have a lot of interest in our community. We've got great contractors doing, you know, building residential in our, in our city. We've got great engineering firms giving us good work to help our city grow responsibly and meet all of the minimum requirements so that we don't create issues in the future with flooding or lack of infrastructure. So, you know, it it's, it's really, it's a really good time. It's, it's busy, it's, it's.
I'm glad you said that, 'cause sometimes it drives me to think, like, you're losing more than we're gaining, and I was heartbroken to see the bathrooms going knocking down my shoulders, it just hit me in the heart there. Why didn't you plan for that, or?
No, they just, you know, they just wrapped that decision up. I'm saying in the last thirty days, and, you know, we're not coming back. Joe's like, Jim's like, okay, I'm gonna find another client, and, you know, they decided that the best course.
I had my fingers crossed they would survive the pandemic.
But, yeah.
One other question though, on that DJ Olden Motors, what's the delay of the cleanup for that?
Thank you for asking. We are dealing with an individual, and we're still trying to figure out the best way to move forward. The gentleman has limited funds, but we are, we're formulating a plan to urge him or encourage him to move forward somehow with that property. It, it, you know, it takes time. I'm, we, we, you know, when it comes to real property, you just can't come in and run roughshod over somebody. It's not like, you know, pull, you know, hook, there's an abandoned car on the road, and you can hook your tow truck up to it and pull it to somewhere to fix it or to a junkyard. You know, people who own property have certain rights within, you know, that aspect of real property. The city has to be very careful on how they move forward, because you don't want to do what is called a legal taking without appropriate compensation. So it just takes some time to move the process forward and do it within the legal limits that the Tennessee Code annotated gives all municipalities and all counties to work within. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of people are used to working on the private side, and things happen quick on the private side. Things don't happen quick on the public side, because, you know, you're talking about pack taxpayers' dollars, you've got to, you know, you have to build in safeties for when you do things. Anytime we put a project out for bid, you know, we've got performance bonds, we've got, you know, liability umbrellas, we've got all kinds of stuff that runs the cost up on these things. But, you know, we're protecting the taxpayer by doing that. We know the project will be finished. We know if there's an accident involving any of our citizens, that they have insurance that will, is there to compensate those individuals so that they, you know, won't be coming after the city of Springfield.
Who you insure?
We don't insure any, when, we do like a sanitary sewer project, there's an, there's a liability umbrella.
I understand that. I'm talking about, we're talking about Dan.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm using, so we, to to move forward on him because he has real property.
Well, I I'll give you an example. When he first come in though, at the Burke, he hired two people to come in there and help clean it up. He hired Barry, and he hired another guy, I know, both of them in there with dump trucks. They worked for two weeks. They were paying him a dime.
I know.
They were paying him a dime. They said, well, we can't work for nothing, we gotta go.
Mm-hmm.
So the property's still sitting just like it was when they left it there.
And.
What I'm trying to tell you, David, what I'm trying to tell you is, if some kid gets in there and gets hurt, all that metal, all that garbage in there, all that junk, some kid gets, he gets a plan, and they're gonna, they're gonna do it. Somebody gets hurt, they're gonna come back to the city because we did. We didn't go in and say, let's clean it up, we're gonna put a lien on your property, and when you sell your property, we'll take our lien off of it. That's all we gotta do. It's, it's, it's that simple.
Yes, sir. It is.
If we don't, I was just finna say this, and I I'd like for everybody in this room to go out this weekend. I want you to ride around Springfield, not all, I'm talking about all Springfield. I'm not talking about a piece out there. I'm not talking about going to Shaw, well, Shaw is gone, I forgot. Go somewhere else and look at them. Ride around Springfield and look how horrendous it is. We cannot let Springfield become a dumping ground and a trash can for everybody else, and it's happening. Now, you're doing a good job. He's gone there and done some good houses, built us good places, and I can't think of the guy's name, he's done some good job too. There's some stuff going on in South Main that just helped, helped us become a good kid, a good city. But go look at these warehouses, go look at Davis Place, go look at Danny, the old Glover Building, go look across the street, the building across there, and you'll see what I'm talking about. You cannot let Springfield become that kind of deal. People would love to come here. They, they probably would.
Yes, sir.
You know what they're gonna go to? They're gonna say, well, Springfield's a nice little town, but I really wanna move out to county a little bit and and live out there. And I just use Springfield to go back and forth. But we cannot let stuff like this happen, and it's happening, David, it's happening. If we wanna become a progressive city, as Mr. Hubbard says, we gotta get very progressive about it.
Yes, sir. And and I can, and and I agree with you that is there substantial room for improvement within what we as community development and codes do to help make Springfield a better place? Yes, there is. But when you look back to where we were twenty-four years ago, we've made substantial improvement, we're still making improvement. It's, you know, it was an awful big elephant, and we take a bite out of it every day.
But we seem, we seem like we forget about that part of it.
No.
I mean, you just ride around. I ain't lying, David.
Oh, I know.
You ride around and look at, you look at the trash, it's in people's yards.
Yes, sir.
I don't know why we don't have a, a city truck run out once a week and pick some of that stuff up.
Yes, sir.
But it's everywhere.
And I, and there's gonna be a discussion with the Board of Mayor and Alderman at this coming up September meeting concerning that. A, a lot of that has to do with legal rights of renters.
And the deal that you and me talked about the other day?
Yes, sir.
They finally moved it off the yard.
Right.
And moved it to the side driveway.
And they're in.
That part basically done.
And as soon as, but that's, but he's, that guy is just one of many.
Oh, yeah.
Who have either the renters have thrown their stuff out into the yards, or the landowners have thrown them out into the yards, and, you know, historically, the city of Springfield ran trash pickup like that on a monthly basis. We now run it twice a year.
Yeah.
So, once again, within the ordinances and the framework we have to work with, we've gotta go, and we've gotta identify who owns the property. We gotta notify them.
Yeah, yeah, we can notify them, but I can, I can take you right to them.
I'm, I'm just telling you what we.
The guy on the corner of Pleasant Hill Drive, when you turn at the red light, his grass, is that tall?
Yes, sir.
Is it tall?
Yes, sir.
Now, how in the world did the city code let grass get this tall? I mean, how do you, how you do that?
We cannot, at the present time, until he has a writ of eviction, the lease ear is responsible for that yard maintenance, and he is, and he cannot do anything until he has that writ of eviction, or he could be sued by that renter. It, it's, it's either, I, I, I don't, you know, I, I, I agree with you. It's frustrating not to be able to do what should be done through the city's code system, but the Tennessee Codes annotated protects renters, and very specifically during this pandemic, they've extended those protections.
I'm not saying not protect the renters. I'm saying don't let the grass get this tall.
I understand what you're saying, and we move forward on a lot of that.
He had to mow another day, mow a, a lot out around his car that don't run. I mean, we're letting things get away from us on what you just said, Tennessee's whatever. To heck with Tennessee. Let's go in here and get this stuff done and get it cleaned up.
Well.
And then you're gonna wind up in court.
Yeah, and so.
You think these people aren't smarter to go to court?
I don't know.
I mean, are they really that smart to go to court? No, they're not.
Yes, you will.
If possibility, you know, we, we try to do what, we try to do what is appropriate and is legal with the minimum liability to the city. That's, that's our responsibility. We, but, yes, the, we need property owners that are renter, that are landlords, to do a better job as well.
Well, I agree.
So.
How long has it been since the fire at the Old Carter Building?
It happened in.
About a year? It been a year?
It's approaching it.
It's getting close, about ten months.
It's getting close.
That's, I, I, I think that's about long enough.
Mm-hmm. And I understand, but the other side of that is, there's, you know, we have a budget.
When you get builders coming in thinking about building in that area, and they drive by and see that, say, well, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I understand, but I can't clean it up if I don't have money. It takes a lot of money to do some of these things. So that's why we're pushing him to clean it up. Eventually, hopefully, it'll move forward some way or another. I don't know how, but if the city has to break down and and spend money to clean it up, we will clean it up, we will put a lien on his property, and, and it will be just that. I'm sorry, ma'am.
I said two hundred dollars to clean up that, that property?
But we will lien it. We, you know, we don't do it for free. You know, we give him every opportunity, and if he doesn't do it, we will hire somebody that will clean up all of that, take it to, you know, take it to what can be taken to the landfill, to the landfill. Some of that is gonna have to be taken to a hazardous waste landfill, and we will, whatever we spend, we'll go straight over to the clerk and master's office and put a, a lien on his property. And after X number of years, three, four, five, whatever it is, we will condemn his property.
That's what I'm saying.
And then we will sell it.
Yeah.
And we will get our money back, and if there's any money left over, it goes to that gentleman, if he's still the owner.
Does the man that has the business there, does he own the property too?
Mr. Burge, yes. And we have been talking to him, my codes administrator has been talking to him for quite a while. We have, we're using other avenues as well, putting pressure on him for more than just the code side to, to, you know, decide what you're gonna do and move this forward, 'cause enough is enough. But it just takes a while.
You can talk till you're blue in the face, and he ain't gonna budge.
And he might not. And we, and the city.
When you ain't got the money, you can't do it. That's what I'm trying to tell you, David. When you ain't got the money, you can't do it. You can talk till hell freezes over, but guess what? He ain't got the money, he can't fix it.
Yes, sir.
He had the money, he wouldn't pay it.
Exactly.
I've dealt with him a long time. He's a deadbeat.
Yep, he bought it from your daddy.
Yes.
I remember.
He is a deadbeat.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Greg, I'm, uh.
Is there any way the city would force him to sell?
No.
He had, he had an offer on it from Mr.
Harvey Combs tried to buy.
Mr. Combs tried to buy.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it's gonna come to, eventually, the city is gonna have to move forward and do that, but, you know.
He built some bad townhouses like that.
That's where Paul Vines is already, right there.
And then, uh.
Big spot.
The, the board is gonna have to decide where they're gonna pull the money from to make that happen. They have to make that decision, they want, that they wanna move forward, that they want it cleaned up, and that they, they're gonna figure, they're gonna make monies available to do that. Any other discussion before we move into the last item? Well, there's two items, two more items. The, we, we're, there is a discussion, well, you need to just be aware, possibly on the September Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting, they have completed this portion of the SIA Industrial Drive expansion. We are going to rename this section between the new intersection and the old intersection that was, you know, Industrial Drive went like this, and then down like this way. We are gonna rename from here to here Reed Road, and then it will continue to be Industrial Drive out there. So Industrial Drive will do like that, and then come in and tie into Bill Jones Industrial Drive overhead.
That's Old Holly Plan, ain't it?
I'm sorry?
Uh, this road right, you know, so this road has been closed off already, right here. Between the two buildings.
Between the two buildings.
So that's, that's Old Holly Building that going around.
That, Old Holly Electrolux, and so they have expanded or added, you know, to here Industrial Drive. So like I said, this is old industrial or used to be part of industrial. Since this has been closed off, it's no longer part of industrial, and E911 is recommending that we change this portion to Reed Road to eliminate confusion.
It extends Reed Road. Reed Road is already from Bill Jones to that stop sign.
This is Reed Road right here.
And the only address E that'll have to be changed is the Holly Building. I talked to Kathy Low this afternoon, and they will just give it a different address number, and it will be Reed Road.
So we're, that's gonna be on the, possibly be on the planning.
There's houses on the other side there.
Mm-hmm, there's a street, go sack it, I think.
Right here.
Where your yellow.
Where the yellow is.
Where name change is.
No, there's nothing there.
I mean, all those.
Up there.
Aren't there houses?
No, this, this property right here is the church.
No. There's a, right, the road turns off.
Behind church.
There, there is property right here behind the church that is no houses. This is Carden Circle right here. This is our, our electric substation. This is the animal control right there. This is our, what's called the Gorm Page Regional Stormwater Detention Facility right here. So there are no houses, this is all owned by the church at one time that was the Faith Apostolic.
Greater Faith.
Greater Faith Apostolic Church. I don't know if that, I don't think that's the name now, but.
Now we got a City of Faith.
City of Faith.
Same people, just.
Yeah. Okay, so they're, they, so they own that property out there, and there are no, there are no houses there.
My God.
So we're gonna move that forward, that name change by resolution at the Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting in September. And then we have horizontal appeals, we've only got one item, and the gentleman, this gentleman, Mike Fruden, Mark.
Frondis.
Say again, please?
Frondis.
Is going to come and ask to have a continued use for a construction trailer until they finish out the five hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot warehouse on the other side of the street, at which point they'll pull that out and then. and then they will, uh, pay that remaining area in accordance with their previously approved plan. And that's the end of the agenda.
All right, is there any other business?
I can tell by the looks on your faces that y'all don't want any more discussion. So, let's, uh, entertain that motion to adjourn, and we'll see y'all next month.
So moved.
I heard a motion, let's adjourn.
Thank y'all again for, uh, uh, your service to the city of Springfield.